Good evening. Welcome to the October 8th Killable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will call our meeting to order. With that, I would ask that everyone rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we enter our moment of silence, just bring to your attention, our flags are at half staff today and will be tomorrow. Today, October 8th, is National Firefighters Memorial Day. And this day is set aside to honor the firefighters who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Tomorrow, October 9th, is in honor of North Carolina Army National Guard Sergeant James Allen Slate, who was killed last week in Afghanistan. So as we go into our moment of silence, if you would keep those thoughts. And with that, I'll call for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our agenda approval.
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? Others in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
We're now to be first time set aside for public comment. If you, tonight's a little different in our format for our meeting because we are doing a little bit of business, but then we move into our public forum pretty quickly, which is an opportunity. We'll move down to the table and just try to have a more casual conversation for citizens who want to bring topics forward. So if you want the more formal setting, you can speak now at the podium, and then you can run out the door if you want. Or later, you can speak during the public forum time. During the public comment time, you are limited to three minutes as an individual or five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of a group. Once we get to the public forum, we're not timing. So we'll call from the floor first. Who can have you sign up? Welcome. If you would identify yourself when you approach the podium by name and address for us, and then...
Sure, thank you. Hi, I'm Meredith Crockett. I live at 308 Ocean Acres in Killable Hills. You guys probably remember me from the spring when I came in with concerns of speeding in our neighborhood. We're coming up to Christmas time, so I'm not looking forward to that as well. During the summer, the Killable Hills Police made a great effort to hang around our street in our neighborhood. I do believe that there was one ticket written for 44 miles per hour. This is a 25 mile per hour road. I don't know the other details. I didn't get the figures. I probably should have before I came. So since Florence, they have not been as steady back there. I actually have not seen one officer since Florence. And that's fine. They shouldn't spend all their time on our street. You know, there's other things for them to do. Talking with the neighbors and other people that couldn't be here tonight or at the last meeting like we had tried to plan, everyone is sort of in favor for trying to get stop signs. I want speed bumps. I want something more. I know that's probably not likely. However, we believe that if stop signs were put on the crossroads in Ocean Acres, it's a four-way stops, that it would really solve a lot of the problems there. Just slowing people down, making them stop between the sections. It's like when you're driving on Swan Street back over here. I'm sure you guys all know where that is. There's that one long section of Swan. Everyone speeds on that section because it's just a long straightaway. And that's how Ocean Acres is and Burns is and airstrip is. So I'm not sure, you know, what the, I've obviously talked to Albright about the protocol for it. I don't know if we need a speed study. Not sure that that's even going to make a difference. At the end of the day, the residents who live there want stop signs, some kind of speed control. At least three elementary aged kids have moved within a block of my house in the last couple of months, and they are year-round residents. There are two others that I know of that are elementary age that come in the summer. So there are more houses being built in my neighborhood, more families staying year-round, and speeding is just not going to work. It's just not. The streets are starting to be littered with signs that say, "Drive like your kids live here." You know, I don't, they're ugly. I don't like them. I have one in my yard. I don't like it. So I don't know. I would be happy to get signatures or get any other kind of, you know, people here to stand up and say as well. I have a neighbor that lives down the street that works for FEMA. I believe she has probably mailed a few of you guys before. Her name is Bee. She told me to mention her name tonight because she couldn't be here. She was called out on disaster relief. But I'm sure you can all reference the emails from her because I know she sent them. And there's many other neighbors that are concerned. It's hard to get them here this time of day. Like myself, I have children, so I'll be running out of here. And a lot of people are just getting off work to the families. So it's hard for them to be here at these meetings. So I'm here to represent them with what I can. And I do encourage them to email you guys, so I hope you all are getting them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Randy Appleton. I live at 2024 North Virginia Dare Trail. And I'm here because my property is in the Municipal Service District of Beach Hacks. We're one of seven, only seven houses on the west side of the Beach Road that are included in that district. I'm going to file a written request for my property to be removed from that district based on the statute that gave you guys authority to create the district. The statute doesn't give me a whole lot of information as to who I give that request to. And I'm kind of here asking you guys, do I just file that request with the town clerk? Do I give it to Mr. Varnell? What's the best way for me to get this information to you? Because I've got a lot of stuff before you look at to consider. And I would like for you to see it all because, as I understand it, once I file a written request, it's got to be put on an agenda for a public comment. And I do have some information that I'd like for you guys to be able to consider before it comes back up on the public comment or on the agenda for public comment. So who should I?
You can send it to the attention of the clerk, and then we'll route it. The clerk would route it to the board. The clerk would route it to the town manager and the attorney as well.
So that's Ms. Quindley right there?
No, Ms. Quindley's not here tonight, but Mary Quindley is our town clerk. So that would be, if you want to, are you ready to just give that to someone tonight?
I am.
You can hand it right to Michael. He's our deputy clerk.
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's so much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Okay. We will move to response to public comment. I would say we've got a public forum, but just a little bit, we can talk more about the speeding. I know the police chief has done an extensive amount of work, an assistant chief, so we can have that discussion dialogue unless anyone wants to get into it.
Well, she's satisfied the wait because she said she had to go.
I can wait a little longer. Another neighbor's coming.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, we will jump straight down then to new business. We have one item this evening, the draft water shortage response plan. I'm turning that over to Debbie.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a requirement of North Carolina General Statute 143 355-1, which requires each unit of government that provides water services to the public to periodically update their water shortage response plan, or WSRP. All are required to be submitted to the Department of Environment and Quality and must also be adopted by each unit of government. Killable Hills' plan closely follows the county's plan, since Dare County is our sole water supplier, while also addressing the needs specifically to the town. Our draft has been reviewed by the staff and deemed complete to the standards and criteria established by the statutory requirements. A 30-day public comment period is required for the plan to be adopted. So we'll be distributing the plan and placing it in strategic locations for public inspections. Then it will come back to you at the November 14th meeting for adoption. So no action is necessary at this time. But also in the audience, we have the Assistant Director Derek Dale and Al Burton, the water plant supervisor, if you have any questions, anything specifically.
Is there any questions?
So how many questions at the plane?
Next.
Required to update it periodically? How long is it? Annually, biannually? What's the vice plan?
Minimally. The plan is required to be updated to reflect any changes that we have. That timetable is not defined. The state also does have a minimum criteria of every five years. And so five years from now, we'll be doing it the same again. And the plan is very similar to ones we've seen before. Biggest difference is technology changes, the way we communicate changes, and we kind of address that from our media outlets and things of that nature. As personnel change, that would be updated in the plan as well. So if we had authority personnel change, we'd have to update the plan accordingly. First five sections of the ordinance of the plan basically directly follows the conservation ordinance of our section of our water ordinance. And the latter sections of the plan talk about the review of plan when it's implemented and things of that nature. It's also part of the local water supply plan. It's a requirement. You know, we have to address our water supply needs, but in the event that we have a catastrophic event where either the transmission main from Mania breaks from Dare County, or we have a storm that damages one of our towers or something to that effect, we would implement the plan. And it details different levels, one from voluntary water rationing or water reduction to mandatory water reductions establishes when water is shut off. If somebody violates the plan, we get the rights to terminate service to folks who are not abiding by the rules.
Anyone else?
Quick question. To your knowledge, everybody else, have you ever had to implement any of these stages of water reduction in the history of the town?
To my knowledge, no.
Not to my knowledge. We had that period before the RO plant that we were limited with the availability of new hookups and connections.
Yeah, Fresh Pond was the primary water source. There was times of drought and when Pond would get low, that... Now that our water supply comes from several hundred feet in the ground, and it's not, it's not unlimited, but it's very stable. It's not dependent upon weather.
Probably be something like a major break or something like that, and then you have a fire, and you're just a perfect storm kind of scenario.
Another scenario could be, say, Roanoke Island had a really bad hurricane, and some of the wells got saltwater intrusion or something to that effect. Our water source could be threatened.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
We will move on then to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report for this evening? Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner's Agenda. Mr. Gray, anything this evening?
I do. The, I wanted to appreciate Michael and Mary for putting together the reintroduction of the author signing of the Everybody Help. It was a pretty big event. It happened on the 27th, and they had the authors of the book there. And I got an autographed copy of the book, which was neat. But it was well attended. Michael, how many were there?
About 60.
Yeah, it was about 60 people. And, you know, a lot of people that were ancestors of the people that lived in Axhead Woods. And it went really well. It was very interesting. And then I wanted to also thank Mayor Protim for welcoming the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run to the Monument. He did a great job. He tried to jump on a couple of bikes, but we held him off. We had a big event. It was a very successful event. You know, this is the third year that we've done it. Our first year, we raised about $14,000. Second year, we raised about $25,000. The unofficial numbers right now are just under $32,000.
That's great.
So it's, you know, it's phenomenal. We help a lot of kids in Dare County with that. And it helps everybody to be a part of the community all in general. We've got the open house for the fire department that's coming up tomorrow. I'm sure some, probably somebody else had that to mention, but a celebration of Fire Prevention Week is from 5:00 to 7:00. Is that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
That's always a good time there. That's another one of our shining stars that we're really excited about, or I am anyhow. And other than that, that's all I have there.
Thank you. Glad you're here tonight. Been through a lot. You're a true first step. Mr. Wendell?
One quick thing to add to that, and kind of the step back committee reports, is the Community Affairs Commission, we are talking about having a table at the open house tomorrow night. So thank you, Chief Tilly, for letting us come out today. And...
I just want to say thanks to everybody who helped and attended the Alzheimer's Walk on Saturday. It was well attended. There was a lot going on. I wasn't able to be there, but I do, I have talked to Diane, and things were, things went really well on that. The fire department's always there. So we're well represented as a town, so it's great to have that going on. Thanks.
I want to thank everybody for the ice cream social. That was a great event, as always, and we had our super scooper assistant chief, era scooping the ice cream. It was great. And the jazz band from the school and... It was great. Thanks for all the staff and everybody participated. Doug Zilger did a great job again, cooking, and it was great. And my sister was in from out of town, had a chance to dine with us, and we had a great time. Thank you, Paul, for that.
And we'll move on to Mayor's Agenda. There's one item in your packet, and then I have a couple other announcements. The item in your packet is a resolution expressing support for the establishment of a North Carolina Highway Historical Marker acknowledging the importance of the circus tent in North Carolina, the Outer Banks, and specifically the town of Killable Hills. The new, is it Hermannix? An other circus tent alumni have begun the application process to try to get this designated historical marker. And basically, the historical marker program in North Carolina recognizes places, events, and persons that have statewide historical significance. The resolution from the town would be in support of the application process to make this designation. The circus tent was established back in June 1968 and operated for 20 years along the BIPEC and Killable Hills. And it's, you know, fond, fond memories for folks. There were pictures here at the beginning of the meeting, just with some pictures and comments and some historical notations. So with that, I'd like to ask or make a motion that the board adopt this resolution supporting the establishment of this.
Good question. What was the exact location of the circus tent?
It's at the corner of, is it Bob Street?
Slice Pizza.
Slice Pizza. Thank you. Cut pause of there.
Trying to figure that out. I was reading through this. Where exactly it was.
Slice Pizza's a great.
Good landmark.
Landmark. There's a motion. Is there a second? Thank you for the second. Any discussion? Others in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Also want to draw to your attention that many of you know, Killable Hills Town Hall is a site for early voting, and the early voting schedule is expanded this year. It begins on October 17th and runs from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's a lot longer than in the past. If you recall, it used to be half-days pretty much. Here, it'll run Monday through Friday. The last day of early voting is November the 2nd. There is Sunday voting on October 28th from 12:00 to 4:00, and one Saturday, November 3rd, from 8:00 to 1:00. And I believe, is that, we know that they're going to do that here as well as over in Mania. Historically, it's just been Mania. But we understand that they're going to use this site. They're going to have both sites open on the Saturday and Sunday. So lots of opportunities for folks to vote early if they so choose instead of waiting for Election Day. And to accommodate all of this expanded time, you'll note our next meeting for the Killable Hills Board of Commissioners is not until Wednesday, November 14th. If you've been out to Frog Pond at night, you can see the lighted ribbon marking breast cancer awareness. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And thank you to Buildings and Ground staff for helping the town recognize and help draw attention to National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The town's bulk item collection begins Monday, October 15th. That's typically a big question on Facebook, when is it? When is it? It's Monday, October 15th, so make sure you have all of your items in the right of way by Sunday, October 14th. You can go on the town's website to understand how you're supposed to divide and section out the items that you want to have alongside the street. But we want you to make sure you don't miss that opportunity. And then last, want to draw recognition to OVX Entertainment is hosting the Halloween Parade on Sunday, October 28th. It starts at 2:00 p.m. That's registration, and then the costume parade is 3:00 p.m. This has historically been held in Axhead. This is the first year they're moving it to Killable Hills around Aviation Park. I know, I believe, the Crime Watch Group, as well as the community of our city, are going to have tables at this event. And should be, it's a family-friendly fun event. So we wish them well and encourage you to come out and participate. And with that, that's my items. We'll move to Town Manager's Agenda. Town Attorney's Agenda.
Would you put a circus tent back up? I was pretty excited. Not going to lie.
I was looking forward to it.
Anywho, nothing else, nothing of substance.
All right, thank you. The consent agenda, Debbie?
Excuse me, ma'am, thank you. First item, the minutes from September 10th, 2018 meeting, the August 2018 monthly report. Schedule a public hearing on requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning. Lake Drive Corporation steps section 153.082, exceptions, is to allow 7-foot chain link fence on unimproved property in the light of area 1 zone. Staff recommends scheduling this public hearing for November the 14th, 2018 at 5:30. An approval of the consent agenda will record the board's authorization to move this item forward. Excuse me, number four. This is items that are related to the final phase of improvements on the public works complex. The first is to direct the staff to request financial proposals from banks. Approval of the consent agenda will record the board's approval of a resolution regarding the proposed construction and financing arrangement with the final phase of construction of public works complex, directing staff to request financial proposals from banks. And item B is to schedule a public hearing, November the 14th, at 5:30 for the submitting the proposals that you would look at that we would get from the banking. An approval of consent agenda will record the board's authorization to proceed as recommended. The staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented, and the number will be in order.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Should I have moved?
Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? Others in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Debbie. So with that, we are going to just take a brief pause to relocate down to the table, and then we'll start the public forum. Okay, so we do this twice a year. We set aside time really to not have an agenda, to try to keep the agenda really light, to give anyone an opportunity who wants to just have dialogue or discussion, bring things up, good news, bad news, things you want us to look into. Just an opportunity to do that where you're not locked into a time frame straight. We do ask if you are speaking, though, to identify yourself by name because we do keep record of this for minutes. That way, too, we can follow back up with you if you're asking for information that we don't have the answer to tonight, or if we need time to do some investigation or whatnot. So Michael's still recording minutes for us and whatnot. So anyone want to kick us off?
I just want to repeat what Mike said about this social. I haven't been to one. It was incredible. I hate that I missed. I got there at the end of the jazz band playing, and I hate that I missed then getting here more of that. But the whole thing was just incredible. Congratulations to the town, the staff. Everybody was doing such a great job. Milkshakes were awesome.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have the staff to host it, and they do a great job with it. And speaking of staff, Chief, Assistant Chief, do I see, do you have any information if we circle back around to the speeding? I know you had a report at one point. I don't know if you're prepared on the flag tonight.
I've got some. I don't have the whole report.
Okay. We'll circle. Do you want to share any of the information that you do have tonight? And obviously, I realize you don't have your full report, but...
I think we were four speeding tickets out there. The highest one was in just under 43, when it couldn't be proven, but also we talked about it, so we got a warning on that one. We did a, I got the update to the programming on our speed signs we put out, and we put two speed signs out there. It also has a capability of recording vehicles coming through and their speed, time of day, mass approach. It's got a few of these, but that's, if I keep one for her, give her one.
Sure, absolutely. And we can make more of these available for anyone who would like one.
This was done, as you see, August 2nd through August 22nd. And let's say it was 24 hours a day. If you look down at the bottom right, second line in yellow from the bottom, it counted 12,520 vehicles during that time. But yeah, 24 hours a day, going to school, coming back, one home, coming back to the same car, could be counted four or five different times that one day. So it's got 12,520 different vehicles on that, and you got to figure on that. But as you notice, it's broken down into timeframes and then the speeds that they were clocked at. As you know, the busiest time is between 9, let's see, here's, the busiest, the most speed, excuse me, is when it's between the 21 and 30 miles over. So that's what the majority of them were at that. And then she got up when there's 31, 40 miles over to speed, and then went 121 in that area, which is about 1% of the traffic. And then she got down, and there's only three at 41 to 50, and then 51 to 60 is two. But take in consideration, there's also, this could have been emergency vehicles or the police and stuff like that, rescue squads, and that higher speed could have been that. Don't know, but it clocked everything, and everything, police cars, anything was logged into calls. But that's what we come up with, and we had officers out there as much as we could. It's very bad. I've got complaints on officers being out there.
Because everyone wants to speak.
Yeah, so we tried to, we knew they were out there, and hopefully that slowed it down for a while. And I hope my officer, now he just hadn't seen them, but hopefully they were out there. But they're supposed to be making patrol a day, once a day, is what I passed them to.
The speed signs are out at a lot of times the same time the officers were out there, so I don't know that this is very accurate to...
Well, that's, you know, and then a lot of this, some of them, we had them out there. We had capability of having the speed sign on, and that slows them down. There's also been good with the light off. It still clocks them and everything. So it depends on if the young ones, I don't see how fast they can go, something that's lit up. So we tried to put it down where they don't see it most of the time. But most people try to check their speedometers out when they see those signs. They try to run right at the speed limit, 25, see it, and some of them might be a little bit faster. Is there anything else that I can do that you can take up?
We do have a speeding problem late at night. Last night, there was another issue. I heard drag racing down my street at 2:30 in the morning again. It's not every night. It's random. It's when they can get away with it. With Christmas coming, if the fullest house does the lights again, I light my house up just as much as they do.
just as much as they do, just to slow people down. They want to get back to those Christmas lights as fast as they can. The speed signs that he was talking about that were up that tell you what speed you're going, they definitely helped. When we had one of them going both ways, one of them going out of the neighborhood, and one of them coming in, it really did help. I don't know if that's another type of permanent solution.
Well, we are looking into trying to get some more light. They're expensive.
I bet.
So, you know, we try to use the tax dollar wisely, try to get them on reduced sales.
Stop signs are cheap.
Yeah. Now, I won't get into the stop sign part of it.
Four-way stops.
But whatever the town decides, engineers decide, that's what we'll do with. I'm there just to protect y'all and do whatever we can. My phone's there, and if you need my cellphone, you can call me, because if you hear somebody drag racing at night, we'll pick the phone up, because an officer could get out there, and it'll be too many cars out there at that time of night, and see what they can find out.
I'll call, I'll call.
We don't mind at all, that's why we're there, for it to start off with.
But thank you for the support of the department. It was really great for most of the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana, appreciate it.
Thanks, Dana.
One question. If the town were to look into installing stop signs, what are some of the prerequisites we would need to do to do that? We need to do a speed study. What's required to installing it? So quickly, just vote on it and install it? I don't know if, what goes into, um, what stop signs?
If the residents in an area want stop signs, they would write a request to the Street Improvement Subcommittee. That request would then be staffed through the Police Department, the Town Engineer, Public Services Department, Fire Department, every department, for their comments. The board adopted the Municipal, MUTCD, Municipal Traffic Control Device Regulations, which give very specific parameters for installation of stop signs, so that they're not just put up. And the engineer reviews that and gives his qualified opinion on whether it meets those criteria or not, goes to the Street Subcommittee, they make a recommendation to the board, and then the board has the final say. So a written request to the Street Improvement Subcommittee would be the first step if they want stop signs.
I inquired about that from a friend of mine that lived on Swan Street, and according to the manual that you mentioned, that they don't recommend using stop signs for speed control. There's, there's, I mean, it's done, and it's, it is up to the individual municipalities, but that's not what they, their first recommendation for speed control. We had a situation where there was a few complaints, and the board at the time, it was quite a long time ago, they, they put up so many stop signs that people complained about the stop signs, and they ended up removing most of them.
Those Bay Drive?
So, on Bay Drive, but anyway, you wouldn't have that situation necessarily on a shorter street, but it's something to consider. Now, I'm not saying not to use a stop sign, and where it's appropriate, and it may be very well be appropriate over there, even on Swan Street, but that's something that needs to be looked at by the Streets Committee here.
So that would be something that the neighbors, or if you want, I don't know if you heard what Meredith was saying about submitting and writing a request.
How many neighbors do you send in?
Like, you just need one letter to start the process?
It would be one letter to start the process, and we would let you know when it was going to the Streets Subcommittee, if you wanted to bring your neighbors. We would also let you know when it was going to be heard by the Board of Commissioners, if you want to bring your neighbors, but really, only one person has to request it.
Okay.
Supports, helps. But there is a manual that, that, that the staff looks at to see if it is appropriate on that type of street.
Right, I've read that manual. It's not appropriate, but I want to override that. I mean, 121 cars in a two-week period going 31 to 40 on a 25, with elementary age kids, as many as we have, 10 is too many. 121 in two weeks? And this is probably not even accurate. The batteries go down on this thing at least every couple days, so it'll be out. I mean, there's a couple 51 to 60, would, do you guys want to live on us to be like, with your kids or your animals? Y'all know my, my cat got killed in the spring, it was very upsetting. Thank God it wasn't one of my kids. Or one of the other kids that live a block up, or in the little townhomes, they have a lot of kids there. They're playing basketball right there at the edge of their little driveway. I'm just trying to prevent a tragedy. Oh, no, all the neighbors, I've talked to all of them. Within a three-street radius, they all know who I am, they're all on the same page. They can't get here. This is a problem. They can't get here. They all have kids, same one I have, and my kids are somewhere else. And my neighbor lives right next door to me, he made a sign that said, "Slow down", bright yellow. We put it out occasionally when it's not raining.
Well, I would start the process that way, and it'll open up the opportunity for discussion and more engagement.
Got it.
And then to hear, and encourage your neighbors, I get if they can't be here, but to encourage them to contact us.
So I asked about that in the spring when I got, when I came, and I did get some calls back, but nobody ever directed me, and I kept asking, what is the next step? I'm not satisfied with what I've been told. I also know that my neighbor, Bee, who I mentioned earlier, had the same conversations with people, and was basically told the same thing and shut down. So it's nice to know that we can keep opening with just a letter, and we will follow that process.
Mary, yes. She can send it to me, and I'll get it distributed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm thinking maybe, this is just brainstorming, but traffic concerns be a topic during Community Watching. To get, to hear what's happening in other neighborhoods that you may not know about or hear about through social media after our meetings, if, this problem isn't isolated in Ocean Acres, it could be happening in other places. Community Watching would be a good forum to get those concerns expressed.
Of course, I'm Brandon Jenkins, I'm Meredith's neighbor at 306 Ocean Acres. A coworker of mine that works for Special as well, he lives two streets over to the north of us, and he, he has the same issue as well, even on that road. And that's even a shorter road than what our road is.
And they have a bend in it. I mean, you guys have stop signs right here near Bend.
I live right on Shea, right in the middle of Shea and Dean, and that's the cut through to get across from Ocean Acres over to the school.
Yep.
That's a raceway.
Yep.
And I mean, right dead in the middle, there's a relatively decent hump, and you'd think some days it seducts a hazard people coming through there. But that's also one, but you can't really put a stop sign in the middle of that street. I liked the speed bump idea. Two and a half foot tall bump? If that's what slows it down, it'd slow it down.
Yeah, I think just speeding in all of our neighborhood roads has just got out of control, and we're becoming more and more populated with year-round residents, and it's just very concerning.
I would imagine on Shea, the pedestrian traffic, especially in the mornings and afternoons, kids two in front of schools got to be pretty heavy. Maybe a big concern there.
It is, there's a lot of dogs, there's a lot of people walking strollers, but usually they come up and then make that cut over to Dean to get away from that intersection where everybody hooks and goes left. And then you make the right, and that's Knight Street, and you come back around and hit Sixth. Sixth Street's got to be a raceway, because it's the straightest shot in, but you can't come back on.
We know you're down here. I live on that street there. Many come back, and they do the other way. And it actually, I don't think it's actually too bad, and I don't know why.
That's what I mean, I mean, you would figure that would be a straight shot in.
We had, we had, the Police Department has a post there, and they put that speed thing up there occasionally, and I think that makes a difference. And there are kids walking on that street, a lot of them, and I think maybe when they see the kids in such an abundance, maybe it registers, you know, to maybe slow down, so that may be part of it. Yeah, but there is probably as many as other places, too. Yeah. There's a, I don't know, you can't stop people from doing it, you can try to discourage them as many ways as you can.
Spike strips.
Spikes. That'll do it.
Well, down to your point of the Neighborhood Watch, I mean, perhaps it's something as widespread as it is, I mean, this is people choosing to break the law, but maybe some of the work we can do, because, not to shut down any of the ideas so far, but possibly just a messaging awareness campaign. You know, we've used our social media a lot with our kick butts and how we're disposing of cigarettes butts, and maybe we need some community messaging around safe driving in neighborhoods and watching for children, and something to that effect. And I could see the Neighborhood Watch being a group to drive that social media campaign and communication.
Speaking of the Neighborhood Watch, if you don't know, I mean, piggybacking, I'm sort of it, not really. One of the things that we want to keep in mind with the Neighborhood Watch is we're not really policing, we're more the if you see something, say something group, but we can definitely share through social media, that's easy enough. I think all of the ancillary Facebook groups of the town of Kill Devil Hills, when the town puts something out, we share it to our individual groups, because sometimes they don't belong to all. One of the things that I wanted to ask about was, we've had two meetings so far, and we've had some pretty decent attendance. We have 49 people registered to be part of the group, and that's throughout Kill Devil Hills, which I think is great. We have 66 people on our Facebook page. People are really interested in figuring out what the Neighborhood Watch is about, and some of the goals that we set was not only regarding crime, it's not really a Crime Watch group, although that is a part of it. We're starting with identifying what areas in town have been hit the hardest with crime, and what we're going to do is meet as a group, go out to that community, knock on doors, remind people, this is what's happening in your neighborhood, we want you to lock your door, here's the non-emergency number, if you see something, don't try to address it yourself, call the non-emergency number, people will come out to your, your residence, we'll do an investigation, we'll let the police do what the police do. One of the things that I wanted to talk to you guys about was maybe getting some T-shirts or a hat, so when we're out in the community canvassing, we won't look like grown-up trick-or-treaters knocking on doors, it's not a political thing, but we could have like the Neighborhood Watch logo on the front and maybe a "Slow Down" something on the back, so as people are walking around in the community, they see a mass of people with the same message. So maybe we can tag-team both ways. I certainly could do a fundraiser for it, but it's so much easier if the town would just say, hey, we're going to get you some T-shirts or hats or something, so I'm just going to throw that out there. You know, I don't know how safe it is being out on the street and waving at people and asking them to slow down, I don't know that I would want to put myself in that. So I don't know in that aspect what else we can do, other than just try to inform people.
I think reporting can be reported, yeah. It's something that someone who's concerned about it or Police Department doesn't know about, maybe a good way to connect the dots.
Yep.
That's right.
Absolutely.
If you start seeing an area that has a lot of it, you know.
Right. But you know, maybe that, that's a secondary thing, like, once we've kind of gone out to the communities that have had a lot of crime, and if we're not in a position to circle back, maybe we go back to the area, and we go, hey, who speeds the most? What areas need, you know, some additional coverage or something, and maybe we can tackle it that way. Even just leave it a flyer.
Let me stretch it out a little bit here. How about the volunteer shirts that we use with the town? Do we have any of those available that, that, I mean, could we use those?
Trash Attack shirts.
We have, like, trash attack?
The bright ones?
We have, yeah, Trash Attack shirts, yeah.
Yeah, they have, they have the volunteer, and the logo on the front of them, they were really a bright yellow.
They come at Trash Attack shirts, yes, we have those.
Do we have some of those that maybe we could use to start out with?
Yeah.
The great thing about those is they're that fluorescent yellow with the black.
Yeah, they're highly visible.
It does have a recycle message on it, but that's...
Well, it might be something to start with.
It's something to start with, a starting point.
What I would, what I would, my vision for this group, and like I said, we've only met twice, and we really haven't organized a board or chairperson and what have you, but I would...
You've got a chairperson.
Yeah, right. I would like for them to really be visible, and this way, as we're targeting neighborhoods, you know, people will start to get recognized, you know, like, I wear my Trash Attack T-shirt all the time, but Neighborhood Watch is just a little bit different. I think there's a different level of engagement there, so it's just something to think about. Maybe for Christmas. Just to throw it out there.
Yeah, one of the things, since, because we've got several folks that serve on committees and on the town, gosh, starting as early as late January, early February, you know, budget discussions and preparation, and while this is not a big expense to put T-shirts and hats, but it's good for our committees to be thinking of items, so then we can put them and budget for them, and then you say, you know, I have $500 or whatever it is a year to spend on this, or I have $1,000, and that way, because we found ourselves several times this year going, okay, where are we going to pull money from? We have a new request, we have a new request, so the more we can think, and this is a very new, like, board group.
Yeah.
But that's great, because then you know you have a budget set aside. If that's what the board decides to do, is put, you know, set aside money for specific committees or task forces, then they know they have that amount to work with within a given year for supplies and whatnot, so since y'all are in the room, be thinking of that, to get items to the Commissioners, so we can bring it up in our budget workshops too, going on aside from that. But in the meantime, if you guys are hitting the streets before, we can get something, we can work with Michael to get Trash Attack T-shirts, until we can do something specific for the Neighborhood Watch Committee. Thank you.
And y'all are welcome to join, see our Facebook page.
A T-shirt if you join, so.
I'm not going there, not for you.
Hey, who else has something to discuss or bring forth?
Shall I go up there?
You're welcome to, whatever, or wherever you want to be, you're welcome to.
I think I'll go up there.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Sue Kelly, and I'm up here on behalf of the Community of Parents Commission. And the first thing I want to say is thanks to everybody who's helped with the various projects that the commission is into. It's really pretty exciting right now, because we have two big projects, and one of them is really going, and the other one is moving as well. But I want to say thanks to Commissioner Windley, because he's our board liaison, and he's in the middle of everything, and I have to say thanks also to Commissioner Gray, who got us this great sign, this banner, that we can put up and actually have a real presence at something. So we have been at the Ice Cream Social, and we also went to the event at the Brew Station after Trash Fest, Beach Sweep. We're getting good reception, and we give out these cool things, and if you haven't seen it, I would like for you to see it. It's a little pocket butt container, and we give these to people, and you have to be really careful that you're not accusing anybody of smoking. People do not want to cop to smoking these days, even if they do. So we're very clear, we don't care whether you smoke or not, we just care where you put your butts if you do smoke. So we've been giving these out, and they're pretty popular, and we've got a couple of things coming up. We're going to be at the First Street Halloween thing, hopefully, and the parade on the 28th. And also, Chief Troy has been kind enough to say we can be there tomorrow at the Fire Department. He's also on our committee, and it's a great committee, and we're doing great things. And the bag campaign to keep people using or encourage people to use paper bags is in the works. We've identified some folks we're going to get in contact with, so I think things are going on really well. And our meetings, of course, are open, and I want to mention, these, these are CAC meetings, not the Butt Committee, because we haven't settled on meeting dates for the upcoming meetings of the Butts Committee. But the CAC Committee meetings are a little bit different dates than usual, so let me just mention them. We are not having a meeting this month of the CAC, but November 8th, 8:30 in the morning, that's a Thursday, and December 13th, 8:30 in the morning, that's also a Thursday. Clearly, our schedule is affected by early voting, so thus some of the changes that we've made. But we welcome people's interest, involvement, anything you want to do is helpful, and thanks to you all for being so supportive of what we're doing. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's really you.
Thank you, you did a great job.
Appreciate it. Who else would like to speak?
Just to repeat on the signs, they do really help, the signs, we get them on First Street Lane, which is in my neighborhood, they're long, straight streets. I think a lot of people are just going to work, they got their mind on stuff, and they're not really paying attention to a lot of it, and I think that really is a reminder or a wake-up, that hey, keep watch what you're doing, and they do help tremendously.
Yeah, no, they did. I was coming back from Pine Island, a week and a half, two weeks ago, you know, it drops, they are coming into, pretty coming to dog, and I was kind of cruising along, I see this one, I'm like, oh my God, yeah, I mean, it does, it's a great visual, flashing.
See the headlines.
No, I wasn't speeding then, I slowed down.
Right when it hits twenty-four, it says thank you.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of like playing a game with the signs, it's really unjust enough to get a thank you out of it.
Positive encouragement. Who else has anything to bring this evening to the group?
Cricket. That's all you're hearing, is cricket.
That's right. Well, for those of you who did come out and bring things, and just, we, we do appreciate your involvement in the town, and as you're serving on committees and groups, we really appreciate what you do. It takes a village, and we're just five people up here trying to help out, but you guys really are boots on the ground, and we appreciate that tremendously.
Yeah, every bit of input we get is really appreciated, good, bad, or ugly, not seriously if you mean that, because we want to be able to do the best job we can, and input from everybody is very important. We're not all, you know, we're not so firm in our opinions that we can't be sympathetic or empathetic to somebody's problems, and we do very well at compromising, and we, I think we have a good Board, and, but we can't do it without you.
Any other comments?
Question. Will our November meeting also contain the joint work session, work session with the Planning Board? That's discussed in our last month's meeting? I don't know if it's been before.
I don't think we set that.
We didn't set a date, okay.
What you did ask us to do, that you may be thinking about, was to have a presentation from the Planning Department on special events.
Okay.
And the process that we, that we go through.
And also, the recommendations that the Chamber sent to us, I was kind of under the understanding that some point, we want to have a joint work session with the Planning Board to talk about those.
Yes, that is correct, you didn't set that up. It was my understanding, and I certainly would defer the minutes, but it was my understanding that you wanted to get a feel for what Derek County was going to be doing, which I think they've just established a public hearing.
They have, October fifteenth, I believe.
And have those conversations before you actually set your meeting with the Planning Board.
That's right, yeah. That's what we said.
Sweetheart.
All right, no date yet.
Yes, and, and if you want to set that at the November meeting, that's certainly absolutely important.
I just get that something.
Oh, sorry, skip.
Derek County, there was a huge article, I'm not sure if, but Mr. Ruckel did it or not, in the paper, and it was, it was really informative, and they, they're really, they're doing good at trying to move in that direction towards affordable housing, and probably a lot of things there that we can learn from it. Somebody's done a lot of it.
It will be interesting to see what happens for their public forum or public hearing on that, but it's interesting, too, raises a little concern, when I read one thing in the article that they called out, was that there's no income, there's nothing tied to it, they're just hoping that the developers do make some options affordable, so I'm really, I think it is going to be very prudent for us to watch, and to learn from the discussions and what happens there, because we have a test case that worked here, or, no, that we invested in here, that didn't turn out exactly like I think all of us were hoping for the long-term affordable housing options, so I'm glad there's movement, and I'm really anxious to kind of watch how it develops, because you're right, if you haven't read the article, you should take the time to do so, I think it lays out, there's a lot of different things that they're proposing or discussing at this time in the county.
Our test was basically almost like subsidized housing, right? That's the one you're talking about, where you...
You had, you would, yes, you'd, not really to the level of subsid, you had, it was income-dependent.
Right, okay.
So, but it had to be, it was great, it had to be a high enough income to be able to afford it, so it wasn't really subsidized, because you weren't, but yet, if you skip over that threshold just a little bit, then you, you wouldn't qualify, so, yeah.
I have heard that, people tell me that Airbnb's getting so popular now, that there's so many of them, that now they think they're going to be some of them that can't get filled, so maybe they'll go to longer-term rentals, you know, once you get to a certain point, hopefully, then that'll open some of them up to, you know, people that, all they need's one, you know, efficiency or whatever, so that, that's a, hopefully, that's promising as well.
Yeah, I mean, without a doubt, the one thing that has occurred is the discussion is now a lot more broad, so I mean, and that's, hats off to the Chamber and the great pushing that, because there's a lot more folks engaged in the discussion than before. So, I mean, Kill Devil Hills kind of led the way years ago with trying to look at affordable housing, we were the first town to adopt an Affordable Housing ordinance, so it's nice that other, the county and possibly other municipalities are engaged in that.
One thing I wanted to, to bring up, and talking about some of the stuff with the county, I wanted to make everybody aware of how hard you have been beating the drum on the stormwater issue. You've written a couple of letters to the county and to DOT, and I commend you for that, to try to keep that issue forefront on everybody's mind, because it is a, a problem county-wide, and I, I just wanted to make everybody aware that you've been really beating the drum on it pretty hard, and I appreciate it, because that's one of my best things.
Thank you, and then, every time I'm beaten, I'm throwing your name out there that you're willing to stir. You may not want to think me too publicly.
Well, I think you've been doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you, Jerry. Anything else this evening, or anybody?
Did anybody see the thing in the milepost that explains our first mayor?
Yeah.
If you haven't seen this, you need to look at it. It's a series they did on streets, and it turns out Mustian Street, which I drive down practically every day of my life, was named after the first mayor of Kill Devil Hills, a woman. She was elected just as the town voted in the fifties to become a town, a municipality, and after she got elected, there was a movement to turn that vote back, and she fought it off, she got re-elected, and then she stepped down. I think that's cool.
I really do.
I never had any idea. I think everybody should know that, you know.
I'm glad you see that out, and I'm sure the Walkers will appreciate, yeah, picking up a milepost.
That's right.
They live in the town that produced the Milepost Magazine, Sue.
It's a great, it's a great publication.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? It's not a motion to adjourn from the court, somebody, there's a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all, appreciate the input.